I don't know.
Good evening and welcome to the city of Battle Creek in our Battle Creek City Commission Workshop. And at this period of time, if we could have a roll call, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Kotarski-Smith?
Here.
Commissioner LaCosse?
Here.
Commissioner Lance?
Commissioner Morris?
Here.
Mayor Mark Banky?
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Commissioner Simmons?
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Here.
And Vice Mayor Sophia. Thank you.
I would like to turn it over to our interim city manager, Ted Dearing.
All right, thank you Mayor. We have a presentation this evening on a proposed resolution that will be on the agenda this evening to enter into a new emergency services agreement with Life Care Ambulance. And we thought it would be prudent to have an opportunity for the commission to ask any questions they may have and learn a little bit more about what's being proposed here. So I'm going to turn it over to Chief Bagley. And Ron Slagel is here as well from Emergent Health Partners to provide the presentation.
Well, good evening, everyone. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for being with us this evening. And I'd like to introduce Ron Slagel, who's the President and CEO of Life Care, along with his number two, Brian Walls, Vice President of Operations. Thank you for being here. This probably would have got done in February, but aside from some illness stints and vacations, here we are in May. So I want to turn it over to Ron so he can bring us up to speed on some of the information that he has regarding relatively new data pursuant to ambulatory care here. Go ahead, Ron. Thank you.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. Mayor Banky, City Commissioners, it's nice to be here. So I think as we go into this new contract opportunity, I thought it'd be helpful to provide everybody with a little background information of kind of how we got here and where we're going to proceed from here. So we'll just jump right in. So we've already done our introductions, but in this evening, I want to cover a little bit of the history of Life Care and our current EMS system, some history about our response times and patient outcomes related to those response times, as well as safety, and a focus on quality metrics, along with patient satisfaction, and then some specifics about the proposed changes in the city contract. So Life Care was created in 1983 by the city of Battle Creek and the four area hospitals at that time. In 1983, we had two volunteer rescue squads which had been here since the 1950s, as well as a rotating, a for-profit provider covering the city of Battle Creek that was having trouble maintaining financial stability. So when they approached one of the hospitals about purchasing them, the hospitals took that opportunity to engage the other hospitals, along with the city of Battle Creek leadership, in saying, "Let's do something different rather than just keep repeating history that's not working, and create our own ambulance service." So they were able to create what was then called Serial City EMS, which later became Life Care. And Life Care was able to initiate advanced life support or paramedic level care, not only throughout the city, but the surrounding townships. Life Care's service area has grown into Berry, Kalamazoo, Branch, and St. Joseph counties over the time of our existence. And then in 2018, we merged into Emergent Health Partners, another nonprofit organization that, which has affiliated ambulance service in Jackson, Ann Arbor, and Monroe. So the Life Care service area is where it's shaded in the map there. Obviously, it got our start here, as I mentioned, in the city of Battle Creek. So when we first started, there was no EMS system. We only had basic 911 service. There, we did not have medical first responders prior to Serial City EMS and Life Care being in existence. So working together with all stakeholders in the community, we were able to create a system that included medical control, education through KCC, medical first response through the Battle Creek City Fire Department. And fortunately, with the help of the WK Kellogg Foundation, they gave the system a very large grant to create the communications infrastructure for this new EMS system. At that point, prior to having advanced life support introduced into the city of Battle Creek, Battle Creek was the largest metropolitan area in the state that did not have paramedics through advanced life support. Paramedics are able to do medications, cardiology, twelve ADKGs, and advanced airway, essentially as the emergency room on wheels brought to the patient at the scene of their medical emergency or traumatic event. As a not-for-profit organization, we have a board of directors, and we continue to have that today, of area residents throughout the Life Care service area. And we developed a performance-based contract, which we've had with the city starting in the late 1980s. Initially, there was a financial subsidy, but as Life Care grew from beyond the city into the outlying townships, we got increased revenues from the insurance companies, and therefore never, no longer needed a subsidy from the city of Battle Creek, and that was phased out. So our current EMS system is comprised of the use of Calhoun County Central Dispatch to answer the 911 calls when people have a medical emergency. Battle Creek Fire Department provides the medical first response, and then Life Care Ambulance provides the advanced life support and patient treatment and transportation to the hospital. We have oversight by the Calhoun County Medical Control Authority. That is not a function of county government. That's actually a delegated function of state government, but typically throughout the state, it's delineated at the county level. There are several counties that have multiple counties within their jurisdiction of a medical control authority. And some, like in Wayne County for Detroit, there's actually two medical control authorities in Wayne County, but generally, there's, it's delineated on a county geographic basis, even though it's not a function of county government. And then, as I mentioned, we have EMS education through Kellogg Community College. It's one of the premier education programs here in western Michigan. On a response time history basis, EMS really evolved in the 1970s, when the United States had a white paper done in 1966 that really changed the tide of how emergency services were provided. They recognized that across our country, there was a lack of any type of system or provision of care, and we actually, Vietnam soldiers actually had a better chance of survival in a war effort than citizens living at home. And that really shocked our country and really got the impetus to get EMS across the country. The primary focus was to implement advanced life support or paramedic-level systems and focus on response times. And that response time standard from back in the early 70s was always eight minutes. And that was derived from a 1979, very famous research study that showed the benefits with CPR starting within four minutes and definitive care occurring in eight minutes, that that really made a big difference in patient outcomes. So that's across the country, including Battle Creek, how we developed our EMS system. The interesting thing about that study was one of the most important aspects of definitive care was defibrillation. And in 1979, the only people who could do defibrillation with a cardiac defibrillator outside of the hospital emergency department or the hospital were paramedics. Today, the general public can do that. But we built our system based on that aspect. So the facts remain that having an automatic defibrillator and CPR within those four minutes and eight minutes is very, continues to be very important. But now the general public can do that, or our first responders. So the emphasis has changed from making sure that we have that ambulance there in a short time period, and changing that to make sure that we have a response time that's quick for the patients that truly benefit from that. So one of the things that used to occur when I was a paramedic in the road was that almost every call required the ambulance to respond with lights and sirens. And as we've evolved and looked at that, we've learned that that's clearly not the case. There are many requests for 911 that need an immediate response, or maybe even a delayed response, or maybe they don't even need an ambulance at all, but we still have to work through those things. But really, we've worked through a process that allows to, using a medical prioritization dispatch protocol, to make sure that patients who do need a license and response get that, and those that don't have any need for that then have an immediate, but not, without using the license and response. In our county, we use a program called Emergency Medical Prioritization Dispatch. It's a proven and medically-approved protocol. Calhoun County Central Dispatch has used it for many years. Life Care uses it as well. And it really helps delineate the level of response that we need for a request for emergency services, for an ambulance or medical help. It also determines not only the response mode of the ambulance or the first responders, but whether first responders are even needed on that call, or if the ambulance can just go by themselves, driving normally. The conditions where patients truly need a very quick and immediate response are cardiac arrest, respiratory arrest, in which where the patient is not breathing, choking, and then a life-threatening bleeding. So I wanted to just illustrate for this last year, the calls that Life Care has received by the type of calls. And I've highlighted in red those truly life-threatening emergencies where every second counts. You can see that that only adds up to about 2.4% of all the 911 calls we get have a true life-threatening emergency. By our protocols for Emergency Medical Dispatch, we respond to about 40 to 45% of our 911 calls with lights and siren, but these are the calls where time really is of the essence.
Can we go back to that just for a second?
Yeah.
Now, all of these, frequency by type, are they, are you transporting all these people?
So these, these would be the, I believe they'd be the request for service. So, so no, we would not be transporting all of these.
Okay.
When you say request for service, you actually showed up to these, but didn't necessarily transport every one of them. It may have been, oh, okay, we've got to stabilize and your family can take you to the emergency room or whatever, but it doesn't require an ambulance transport.
Correct. About 20 to 25% of our responses do not result in a transport. And that is either because the patient says, "I'm fine, someone else called for me," or we assess them and be able to treat them at the scene, or in some cases, a family member will drive them to the hospital. Yes.
Thank you.
Is that a average across the state? Would you say 25% of your calls are not transported then?
Yes.
Good.
So as I mentioned, we want to make sure those quick response times are focused on those critical patients, and we use those protocols through the dispatch center to define both our level of response, whether an ALS unit ambulance can go, a basic life support staff by EMTs would be appropriate for low acuity patients, whether or not first responders are activated to the, to the call, whether we do go with lights and siren, which is a priority one response, or whether we respond immediately but without lights and siren, which is designated as a priority three response. So deviating a little ways from response time performance, I wanted to share for the past three years what our patient satisfaction survey has entailed. We send out about 800 surveys per month to our patients, and those that respond back are indicated here. And there's two specific questions, although one looks like got cut off a little bit. But the first one in blue is related to the question of the patient's satisfaction of the ambulance arriving timely. And the second one, related in orange, is related to the patient's satisfaction of the care that was provided by our EMTs and paramedics. And as you can see, that stayed very consistent throughout the years and has been in the 92 to 95% range. So we're very proud of that, very proud of the team of EMTs and paramedics that provide care here in the city of Battle Creek and surrounding communities. So one of the things we also wanted to focus on, we've talked about making sure we don't respond lights and siren to, on 911 calls that don't need that. But additionally, because we're providing that emergency room and emergency room level care in the field, we want to reduce the number of times that we're transporting lights and siren. And why do we want to do that? Because it's dangerous. There is an epidemic across our country of people being injured and killed in crashes with emergency vehicles. And wherever we can minimize that, we want to do that. We want to get the patient delivered to the hospital safely, and we find that most serious ambulance crashes occur when they're traveling with lights and sirens. Not only are they sometimes proceeding through intersections, but they're also finding times that the other drivers on the road don't react expectedly when approached and surprised by an ambulance coming up beside them or behind them with their lights and sirens activated. And also, in addition to that, traveling with lights and siren usually stays less than two minutes, and the risk of a crash greatly outweighs that. The other interesting thing, and if you've been to the emergency department lately, you understand this, many people are going to the emergency department. So many people are waiting for the care, and even if you get inside into a bed or a cubicle, you still have to wait for the care that's provided. And then we also want to be able to make sure that we provide the best level of care. And if we're driving using red lights and sirens, this causes a much more unstable environment for the paramedic taking care of the patient in the back of the ambulance, and we're able to deliver the advanced care much more effectively if we're doing that in a safe manner. Additionally, the use of siren will often increase the anxiety of the patient as well and worsen their medical condition. Our state medical director has set a goal of having 5% or less of a patient transports utilize lights and siren when they're responding to the hospital. For the past year, Life Care's use has been 2.8%. We've been very good at identifying when we, that the few times we actually need to use those lights and siren when the paramedic is not able to stabilize that patient. One of the other things we wanted to do was focus on quality metrics. And we'll be talking about a joint statement, a position paper, and it was shared with your packet, that talked about the importance of using quality metrics rather than just time metrics to measure the effectiveness of the EMS system. So this joint paper really was a collaboration of many organizations, many of which sometimes disagree, but they all came together on this one. So I'll point out, it's a wide group of individuals related to emergency care. It's the American Ambulance Association, the American College of Emergency Physicians, the International Association of Fire Chiefs, the International Association of EMS Physicians, and a wide variety of quality and other EMS stakeholder groups that all came together and agreed with this position paper. And essentially, what they said is, "We should be focusing on clinical measures. We should be focusing on patient satisfaction and the safety of the patient and the ambulance crew. This should not replace response time performance, but in many contracts across the country, response time performance was the only thing being measured in the contract." So they said, "You really need to be able to expand that beyond just the response time measurements and really look at what's going to benefit the patient." So how is this information going to impact how we deliver EMS care here in the city of Battle Creek? We continue to work with Central Dispatch, our Medical Control Authority, and our first responders to eliminate and reduce lights and siren uses when they're not needed. We're going to utilize basic life support ambulances to respond to low acuity patients. This leaves the ALS or paramedics units available for those high acuity patients, or those patients who have the highest chance of needing medical interventions. And this follows, you know, medical care practices by hospitals and physician offices. When we sometimes go into our physician office, we don't always see our physicians. Sometimes we see a nurse practitioner. Sometimes we see physician's assistant, based on our needs. We'll do the same thing here in EMS. And then moving our response time standard from eight minutes to 10 minutes for priority one calls. This has already been well-established in other communities. Ann Arbor, Jackson, city of Kalamazoo, all have that as their response time performance measures. And then we've added a performance measures into the contract that would measure clinical quality, patient satisfaction, as well as safety. Before I get into this one, I just wanted to kind of give a few more details about that. So in the joint position statement, they said there were five areas that they wanted, that they suggested that communities should put together with their ambulance provider and include in their contract. One is, relates to effectiveness, and we've added that within clinical metrics that we'll be reporting to the city. In the area of safety, we're going to be reporting on red lights and siren use while transporting to the, to the hospital. They urge that we look at patient satisfaction, so that is included as a metric as well. They also urge to make sure that we have equitable care. And I'm pleased to say that we have measured that by using the individual wards in the response times for those across, we've used that since the initial contract back, back in the 1990s. I think the history of that was to make sure that we responded appropriately to the areas of the city that had lower socioeconomic perspective, and wanted to make sure that patients who might have a better chance of being insurance weren't getting better care than someone who might not. But I will tell you that the challenge we have is the, our best response times are into the areas that are historically socio and economically disadvantaged. And then they wanted, they suggested in this joint position paper to look at efficiency, and so we'll be continuing to look at response times. So I wanted to talk a little bit about response times as it relates to, to our ambulance service and our performance. This is just a, excuse me, a graphic representation of a 10-minute response time, showing all the calls in green, that how, what the frequency of those would be for each minute of that 10-minute window, and then continuing on if there was a delayed response for 11, 12, 13 minutes, et cetera. So you can see the bulk of the responses will occur within, under 10 minutes, but most of those occur between five and seven minutes. And the blue dot would represent the average response time for that, for, for a particular month or reporting period. And we really wanted to make sure to address some of the challenges that we've had with response times. One of the issues obviously we've had is staffing, but staffing has recovered, and response times still are not as good as we'd like them to be. And there's been a number of changes over the last five years that have really impacted that. One is the significant growth of the city, city residents in the very southern edge of the city. And our ambulances are typically responding from either the center of the city, or if we're very busy, having just dropped a patient off at the hospital, and then having, which is on the very northern edge of the city, now have to travel to the very southern edge. So that's clearly one of the challenges that we've been facing. The other thing that's been happening is more of our emergency patients are going directly to Kalamazoo from the scene of their emergency call. This means the ambulance is out of service out of the community for extended, more, a longer period of time, and not available for that next emergency call. And then the other impact we're seeing is, as the hospitals are being overloaded and emergency departments with increased demand for services, it's taking longer for us to offload our patients and be available for the next call, and we're seeing increased need to handle behavioral health transfers out of the community. This is a problem not specific to Battle Creek. It's a problem across the country. And just to give a perspective, when there is a patient that presents in the emergency department who needs to be admitted to an inpatient, that hospital then has to find an inpatient bed. Sometimes that takes hours. Sometimes that takes days to find that appropriate bed. And when that bed opens up, they want to move them because that patient has been remaining in the emergency department all that time. Oftentimes, we're taking them from Life Care's perspective to the east side of the state, as well as to Indiana. So that obviously takes our ambulances out of the, out of the area a longer. We try to use our basic life support ambulances as much as possible to do that, but sometimes our paramedic ambulances are the only ones available to do that. It's a statewide problem. It's a national problem, and, and it's one that's really impacting a lot of EMS systems across our country. The challenge, some people might say, "Well, let's focus on emergencies. Let's not, let's not take those patients. Let someone else take those." Well, the challenge is, if those patients remain in the emergency department, that starts to back up the emergency department. And as the emergency department backs up, then us, our ability to offload patients in a timely manner when we bring in an emergency patient increases, to the point, at some points, the hospital goes on diversion, and now all of our patients are going to Kalamazoo, and none can come to Battle Creek because we completely overwhelmed the capability of that, of our local hospital. So it's a complex issue. I wish we had an easy solution. I'm on a statewide task force looking at patient movement and how we can make improvements across our state. And the concern I obviously had is if some of the proposed federal Medicaid cuts go into effect, that's going to only, not only worsen our problem. But we have been making progress. I think we're in a good, improving place, and we want to be able to continue to work together.
What agents are you using right now, instead of sending an ambulance with that type of a patient down to Indiana? I mean, could you call a taxi cab? Could you call Uber? Could you send the fire truck down there?
Yeah. So the problem is, there are limited resources that you could do to have that. These are patients that still need some kind of, even though they may not need a monitoring, they may, for medical monitoring, they still need to be managed so that they just don't leave. So if you just called the taxi or an Uber, they might just leave, and they pull up to a stoplight somewhere. And that, that benefits, doesn't benefit the patient, and obviously doesn't benefit the hospital. So they still need to be in some kind of capacity, travel, or capacity that can, that can be controlled. That being said, we've been exploring, are there other alternate transport systems in between? So we, we have wheelchair van services, vehicles, but those aren't really equipped to do that as well. There are some models being implemented here in the state that is basically a behavioral health transport model. So it's essentially like an SUV, but the patient can be in the back, but they aren't able to leave the vehicle on their own accord. So we are exploring that. The biggest challenge is, insurance companies don't yet pay for that. So the hospitals would be burdened with paying for that. So that's a challenge for them as well. But it is something we're clearly exploring because we'd rather have the ambulances available to do ambulance calls for, for the emergencies.
Right. Thank you.
Yes. Then I, as I said, I included those, some, several items of documents there related to show that this is not just an issue that this community is talking about. Many communities are talking about, how do they change their system to best meet the needs of the patient? And I think what we've appreciated our work with city administration, our public safety partners, to create this contract that I think will set us forward for the next couple of years, and be happy to answer questions about our service or anything else you'd like to talk about tonight.
Are there any questions, Commissioner? Patrick O'Donnell?
Yeah. Again, on response times, because it's just confusing to me and probably maybe other people, you, you had a standard of eight minutes, and now we're going to 10. And I understand the south side of town, but I mean, why? I mean, we, you talked earlier about how we got to be there sooner and sooner and sooner, and then you turn around and say, "Well, we'd like to be compliant within 10 minutes." Just expand on that.
Sure. So the, the time that are truly important are those, those four types of calls that we talked about, but those are only about 2%, 2% of our total calls. And we truly need to focus on making sure we have good response times, not only from our first responders, but the ambulance to those calls. But all the other 97% of the calls, we don't, there's no patient, there are no studies that show that it actually benefits the patient. It only ends up becoming a patient satisfaction issue, if that's an issue. And to move from eight minutes to 10 minutes, it has been widely accepted across the country as the, as the best practice. Eight minutes used to be the best practice. I'm now saying 10 minutes is the best practice across our country, because that, those, that extra two minutes... across our country, because that extra two minutes doesn't matter to the clinical outcome of those patients.
But if we're using these standards and we're using the golden minutes, as they call them, I believe is what it's called, is that's not, you're putting the whole entire response time under that 10 minutes and not just those priority calls? Or, I mean, that's the part that's confusing.
Yeah. So we want to focus on those high priority calls, but yes, we're looking at all the priority ones in that one globe, because the small amount of subset you'd have for those truly life-threatening emergencies would be a fairly small number.
Yeah. I just wondered if you could break that matrix up and say, these were slight non-emergency or code three instead of code ones to meet those times? And that's, I think that's what's confusing the public is this average 10-minute, from eight to 10-minute, and I just wanted to get it explained a little better.
Yeah. And it's always been my goal in for so many of our communities to be able to report out for those truly life-threatening emergencies, what was our system response? Not just the ambulance, what was our system response? Because if the ambulance gets there in seven minutes, but it takes six minutes for the first responders to get there, then that's a problem as well, because you want, you want to have somebody there in four minutes.
And one other question on that, about like dispatching, there's a lot of new software that's using AI that almost pinpoints what's going to happen. Not exactly, but will that be used in this new standards that you're using? Is there going to be using that kind of software to help make sure we have the people in the right places?
So we do have, our dispatch system does have that technology, and we have been getting ready to implement that. It's not directly related to the performance measures, but it would allow us to better position the ambulances to where the likelihood of the call would be, while still not making sure that someone has a significantly elongated response time, but we are getting ready to get that implemented.
Thank you for your answers.
Commissioner Simmons?
So Ron, good to see you. It's been a long time, but I appreciate you showing up here tonight and discussing these very important issues to our community. Recently, I went through the Kellogg Community College Medical First Responder Academy, and I graduated. Actually, last year, I didn't, last week, I didn't go to the graduation at Kellogg Community College, but they left my certificate and my PIN on my desk at DLA. I work at the Federal Center and was a volunteer there. And one of the reasons that they have a crew of folks at the Federal Center that does this is because of the response times. And whether it be eight minutes or 10 minutes, when your ambulance shows up at the Federal Center, well, then they have to get through security and they have to find out where they're going there. And so we're talking more like 20 minutes. So when it comes down to this response time that eight versus 10 minutes, things like, especially in businesses, large buildings, large facilities, if we have a trained, some trained employees that can actually be, act as first responders until, to stabilize those folks, and even in the cases of like requiring CPR, those critical first minutes are so important. So, and this, going through this course has shed so much light on this, and I had an opportunity to interact quite a bit with instructors at Kellogg Community College, as well as cohort of other EMS students going through those programs, just chatting with them. And so, again, it's been very eye-opening. So everything you're saying here is, is my understanding as far as response times makes a lot of sense. I guess maybe from the city's standpoint and from your standpoint, as far as changing that, what is the impetus that's driving us to change that? Is there some kind of financial reason that we need to change this? If you don't meet these metrics, that you're going to be penalized, and if you're penalized, that's actually going to affect us, our community even more? Can someone, either you or from the city staff, talk about that? And what's driving that? And then there's, and then I want to talk a little bit more about some of the other factors that are causing these.
Sure. So when we first got into conversations with city administration, it was Life Care that said, yes, let's go ahead and change that, because I think we all recognized having a response time standard that was just going to financially penalize and that actually jeopardize the community's care was not suitable. So then we looked at, what are the best practices? What's the current research doing there? And we looked, and we looked to see that, like City of Kalamazoo, where the medical direction is provided by the state medical director, had switched to 10 minutes. And they have, they've actually, they published a study several years ago that showed they had no change in cardiac arrest outcomes of their patients. Matter of fact, by some other systemic changes they did, they actually had improved cardiac arrest outcomes for their patient population in spite of delayed, increased response times by the ambulance. So there are some other ways to deal with that, but those are really the impetus why we discussed that.
Okay. And 100%, I appreciate that if you are financially penalized, it harms the system and then does us, does us a disservice in our community.
And then, let me just add in, and then the reality of based on the other systems, can even, even at full staffing, it's not going to be, it's not going to be achievable to have an eight-minute response time standard at 90% like we used to, based on those other factors, based on hospitals, hospital turnaround times and more transports to Kalamazoo, and the growth in the city that we've seen.
So I want to talk about a couple of the other factors that are really outside of your control. We have seen over the last decade or more Bronson Hospital coming in saying, hey, we don't need all this in Battle Creek, and we're going to offboard it to Kalamazoo. They'll do emergency things down here, I broke my arm or whatever, but if we're talking about cardiac, you're not even taking them here, for the most part, is my understanding. You're taking them to Kalamazoo because they've, again, their business model, however they figure this out, is my understanding that they want to push all that over there. That makes us move resources to have to transport patients to Kalamazoo instead of Battle Creek, again, and I think you briefly touched on this, but taking that ambulance out of service in Battle Creek for an extended period of time before getting it back on the road here in town.
Yeah. So there are certain, there are some services that are not available here in Battle Creek. I think Bronson has expanded some and continue to expand some that they can do locally. Touristerary Care is hospital, like Bronson Methodist in Kalamazoo, don't want all the patients to go there, otherwise they get overwhelmed in their system. And the same thing happens in other communities. So there are, you know, cardiac, cardiology patients can still come here. One example I'll give, which patients are always going to go to Kalamazoo and always should, is a patient who we identify when we do a 12-lead EKG, that they're having an active, what's called a, it's called a STEMI. It's a specific type of heart attack. When we, when our paramedics identify that off the 12-lead EKG, the only course of treatment is to get to a catheterization lab, the cath labs in Kalamazoo. That's not, I mean, and the challenge is, here's the other challenge you have is, if you're in St. Joe County or Berry County or Branch County, you're going to Kalamazoo too. So it's not like we can do that. So that is how the healthcare system will be and will always have that. I do think Bronson has been trying to add more services locally so that we just don't have to take everything to Kalamazoo. There certainly have been more that we've taken to Kalamazoo. And the other thing is our patients are getting sicker. They have many more conditions that require higher levels of care, and that's a challenge too.
Yeah. And I guess my final comment is, is my understanding, and correct me my statistic here, but I've heard the statistic thrown out that something like 20 patients in the city cause 80% of your calls. So, and that again goes to, and you briefly touched on this, a lot of people, their first response, I don't feel well, I'm calling ambulance. And that takes critical resources away from those, that small percentage of important, they're all important, okay, I'm sorry, I misspoke there, but from those cardiac arrests and the respiratory and circulatory, those, those things. If you're on this side of town for one of these frequent flyers, I guess I would call them, and then on the other side, we actually have something that, cardiac arrest. So can you speak to that? And I think you briefly touched on that, how maybe we have something in between like this Uber, or whatever you call, I mean, that seems like, or I know the fire department is, most time beats you all to the scene, maybe it's something then they could coordinate there on these ones that are not a priority, and then you could divert the ambulance to something that's the higher priority.
Yeah. So what we've been introducing, and then this contract, proposed contract would allow is the use of the basic life support ambulances or the EMTs, who could go to those low acuity calls and transport, so we keep those paramedics available for those life-threatening emergencies. Many other communities are changing that. You know, throughout my whole career, we've always pushed every ambulance's advanced life support. And now we've found, well, that was great, that may have worked, you know, 20 or 30 years ago, but today we really need to delineate who needs what. And I think we'll see soon down the road, 911 centers that, for patients that truly don't need an ambulance response at all, they'll tell the person, okay, you have a need, if you can't get to the, you can't be seen, you don't have a high acuity need, we'll have someone out to see you in a couple hours. If you can transport yourself to the hospital, that's fine, or your doctor's office. But many communities are already doing that. Denver, Mecklenburg, South Carolina, a number of those are implementing those where, okay, we'll get to you when we can, but we're going to focus on the patients who truly have a life-threatening emergency.
So like a triage, 911 triage?
It's the next step of all the triage center, triage that we already do.
It's a great idea.
Yeah, it's a great idea. And then congratulations on your completion of your MFR. But I wanted to comment on that because places like the Federal Center, which has a longstanding internal response team, places like Denso, Kellogg's have had longstanding response teams, and those are important, as you mentioned, because just because the ambulance shows up to the front door, doesn't mean they're going to be to the patient in the next five minutes. So that's really important as well. But the initial first responder is your 911 telecommunicator, because they're going to be able to tell people over the phone how to do CPR, deliver a baby, or stop, or stop serious bleeding. And that's really the first, the first part of the EMS chain.
Thanks, Ron.
Good questions, both Patrick and Chris. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. And my apologies for walking in partway through your presentation. So you had referenced in response to a question from Commissioner Simmons, you know, even though we've extended response times in Kalamazoo, there are improved outcomes due to a series of changes that have been made. Are we making those same changes here to expect outcomes to, to not be worse than they might already be?
Yeah. So some of those are in the medical protocols that our paramedics follow. And the good thing is, when I was first a paramedic, every county had its own unique protocols. And the state has now have model protocols, which each community then kind of modifies if they need to. But Life Care, because we've worked across a number of regions, we don't want our paramedics have to know, carry different medications in different counties and have different protocols. So we've been able to regionalize those protocols, and some of the, some of the protocols that Kalamazoo has put into place, Calhoun has put into place as well.
Some, but not all.
Correct. But we're working towards that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Let's go to this side. Commissioner Morris?
Thank you. I think my question might be more for city staff. So from what I'm hearing, we don't need lights and sirens for everything. By removing lights and sirens, that is what would add the two minutes. And that's saying that, I heard you say that for the priority one calls, we want the response time to move from eight to 10 minutes. So I guess I do kind of have a question for you, wondering about the response time then for priority three calls and other priority calls? And then the question that I have for the city is, is there a way for us to separate the priority one calls from the other calls in the matter of the response time that we are expecting? Because I definitely understand that not everything needs to be handled in eight minutes, but the things that we do need to handle as quickly as possible, and considering we are meeting those times, why change those times for the things that require that time?
So as far as the priority three response, those would be at 20 minutes is the response time for the priority threes.
And as far as all the medical, the priority on medical calls, those are set through the dispatch. It's not set at the city level. That's actually set through the state level, and it comes down through our medical control. So we don't determine what makes a medical priority one, two, or three. The state does, and then we respond accordingly.
I'm more so asking, like, right now we're talking about the contract changing what we expect from eight minutes to 10 minutes, if I'm understanding correctly. So I'm asking, is there a way in that contract that we differentiate what, what we expect for each call that has been determined by the dispatch authority? Like the timing that we're expecting?
I think maybe, what we're referring to specifically, it's not the, a police or a fire response, that's ambulance response.
Yes.
Our response doesn't change. And normally, because of proximity and volume, we are, we arrive on the scene far more, far faster than the ambulance does. It's just, just because there's more of us to get there. So I would say, and I don't have that off the top of my head, but we are on scene in less than four minutes on the vast majority of those type of calls. Now, again, we could be out on another call, we could be on a fire or traffic accident, those, all those, or weather, all those things impact response time. But I would say the vast majority of the time, we are on scene significantly quicker simply because of our proximity to the geography of how we're stationed.
And then, if I could follow up on that, the value of that is, medical first responders in the Battle Creek Fire Department are equipped with automatic defibrillators, so they're able to administer those shocks to the patients in that very short timeframe, which is very critical, which previously only paramedics could do, but now that can be done by the medical first responders.
And add just one other thing. Even though at the PD, our officers are not medical first responders, we recently deployed 16 brand-new AED units that we carry in our patrol vehicles, that in a cardiac event, they do listen to the, or if they come across an event, that they can also, are trained to utilize an AED as well. So all of these things is in an attempt to, I'd say, address some of these response issues based upon the information that has been provided with, you know, the overabundance of people and utilizing the resources at hospitals, taking longer on calls for ambulance responses, frequent flyers that take up a lot of the resources as well. So we are kind of navigating and working our way through, how do we become better and more efficient at this? And some of these things, like the AEDs and the police cars along with our fire department, is kind of a step in that direction for us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions? Commissioner LaCrosse?
To kind of piggyback off of what Janesha and Commissioner O'Donnell were saying, is there a specific way in this contract to specify the priority one calls that we are under a certain time, less than that, you know, the 10 minutes that we're looking at, to separate the priority one calls under a certain timeline?
So there isn't, in the, in the contract, there isn't anything specified in that to address that? But it's certainly something we could report on, on a regular basis?
I think that the city overall would be a lot more receptive to it if that were the case. Also, I know by call frequency, if I type on that page, it said the 2.4% we kind of looked at were the true life-threatening emergencies, but then I'm looking at the ones that are highlighted, and it doesn't include like hemorrhage, heart problems, chest pain, breathing problems, traumatic injury, severe hemorrhage.
So severe, so severe hemorrhage wasn't highlighted? But yeah, but chest pain and trouble breathing, those are serious conditions, and those would have a priority one response, but, but those are not the ones that if, that is so life-threatening that they're going to die within 10 minutes?
Okay. Also, I, for ours, it's 2.4%, but then it said the state was at 7%. Is there a reason why it differs so much?
I guess I'm not clear on the 7%.
It said a 2020 studies showed that only 7% of 911 calls required life-saving interventions.
That was a national study. So, you know, different communities are different.
Okay. That's all I have.
Commissioner Smith?
Yeah. I was just, it's kind of off of the question that she had, because I just would like a little bit more clarification, but the, like the chest pain, so you said this was, these were the calls made, not necessarily like the outcome of when you guys arrived?
So it would be how we arrived, but what, those are not necessarily what we transported.
Okay. But so like the chest pain, you stated that those were like the non-life-threatening chest pains, and you know that because?
So it would still be, it would still be considered a priority one response, but the, you know, the paramedics wouldn't be able to assess that on scene. And most patients who have a chest pain are transported.
Okay. But so potentially, though, some of the ones that are over here in like the chest pains, the hemorrhaging and things, those could have went over on the, where the highlighted ones are at the end of the day, I'm sure?
They could be, yeah. And those are serious conditions, but the paramedics would obviously be treating the patient at the scene, so that those would obviously be treating the patient at the scene, so that those are not minimized that there wasn't something wrong with the patient. Clearly, many of these situations need, need care. Patients who have trouble breathing would get a breathing treatment, an oxygen, a patient, and an IV, patients who having chest pain would have a 12 lead EKG, given medications and all those things. But there isn't that, that immediate threat of death because they're not breathing or their heart is stopped.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other follow-up questions over here? No? Okay. Ron, how many people do not call for ambulance service because they're concerned about having to pay the bill?
Don't know any data on that, but I know there are certainly people who do that. There, I mean, there's two subsets who don't, I always said, in my career, I'd like to do two, one, two things. For people who truly need an ambulance, they call for one and they get one, because too many people drive themselves to the hospital because they're having cardiac chest pain, and then sometimes they, they have a significant bad outcome. And then the people who don't need to call an ambulance, don't call an ambulance, but that's kind of a pipe dream, but we still try to work at it where we can. But certainly some people do not call an ambulance because of the cost.
Right.
They don't show up in the emergency room because of the cost. And one, and just an illustration of that, people do what they, people's minds are made up of, by what they, they perceive. So during COVID, people who are having legitimate emergency situations were not calling for help, were going to the emergency department. Part of that is because they didn't want to show up in the emergency department when COVID was rampant. But the increase of patients who died in their homes from cardiac arrest skyrocketed during the COVID pandemic, because people were afraid, and some of them go, I don't really need the ambulance, we're going to let the people who are really sick call, use the ambulance service, but they didn't take care of themselves. So that, that, those kind of things do come into play.
Good. How will the Beacon Purchase of Borges affect lifecare?
I don't think they'll have a direct impact. Most of our patients, if they go to Kalamazoo, go to the Bronson system because they're coming from a Bronson system here. Some of our patients do go either directly to Borges or are transferred to Borges, but I don't, I don't think the ownership of Borges really will have an impact for us.
Ron, I've wished for a long time for ambulance authority here in Battle Creek, for the city. How will that affect you? Will it hurt or help the demand and the services that you provide the people of Battle Creek?
Yeah, so I guess I'm not clear on the ambulance authority perspective.
I would like to see at least three ambulances positioned at our fire stations at some point in time to assist in the need of services for the people of Battle Creek.
So, you know, dedicated units always comes with cost. So I guess that's, the question is, what, what does the community want, and what, what are they able to afford? So something we're always open to discussing how that, we could look at that.
Okay, well, I see the Marshall Fire Authority, or the Marshall Ambulance Authority ambulances over here a lot, and I find that interesting. And I asked the mayor one day, he goes, well, I know we make a lot of money from going over to Battle Creek.
Yeah, so, you know, they're our primary mutual aid partner if we don't have an ambulance available, but the mutual aid has been declining because our staffing has been increasing, so.
Okay, good. Any other questions before we go to public?
Kind of like on, along that same line, with the fires, the fire department has kind of shifted a little bit, instead of taking the giant rig out for these, and they're rolling out in, in smaller teams.
Right.
In a, in a pickup truck. Has that model, and I'm kind of, I guess I'm hinting at, at some kind of hybrid than where we do more of that and free you up for more of the critical things? How has that impacted you and how some kind of model like that would, would impact outcomes?
Yeah, so the, the apparatus, the fire department's responding in really hasn't had an impact too much on our system. You know, that's really, you know, what's most effective for the fire department, whether they're utilizing a large engine or a ladder truck rather than a pickup truck, but.
But what I guess I want to say is, they get out there fast, they're using a pickup truck, and they're like, hey, lifecare, this is not something you need to come to.
No matter what they respond in, they, they regularly communicate with us going, oh, this is really a bad situation, you know, if, if you're not coming, lights and sirens, you need to step it up. Or in most cases going, oh, no, everything's stabilized, this is fine, or you don't need to care, you need to come at all, because this, this patient really doesn't have a need for an ambulance. So that, that is regularly occurring.
I mean, but that's always occurred, I guess, whether they took the big rigs or the-
Correct.
The, the quicker mobile.
Yeah.
Okay.
Chief?
Hello? No, part of it is, we're talking about response, but I think one of the things we want to realize is, is that although we have, I think, eight paramedic trained firefighters, and I believe 24 at the EMT level, we also defer to the medical authority at the time. So if we're on a, on a scene, it would be better for the person with the most experience to come and make a determination on scene whether or not that person's going to receive that medical treatment. Calling a ball and strike while on scene and not having the level of experience and/or qualifications to make that is probably a bit, probably an issue. I don't know if the city would want to go in that direction. I would always defer to the, to the, to the medical authority with the most experience and education that can, has the experience to be able to make that medical call.
I guess I'm thinking of something like a mental health crisis where we get out there, and those I know are, are quite frequent, unfortunately, more recently.
Normally, yeah, so.
And is there something in between the fire and then you all, like some type of medical or mental health first responder that could come out and then deal with those kind of things?
Yeah, we have that now. We don't have it to the level that I wish we would.
Right.
However, we transport people, we would, I would say, basically with our CIT program, Crisis Intervention and Treatment Program, what we would do is we, based upon their response to certain questions, if they're a threat to themselves or others, then we can certify them, take them and transport them. Sometimes we do call for an ambulance to assist, it depends on what their demeanor is, right? It depends on if they've injured themselves in that crisis moment. So there's a lot of factors that would come into play for that decision to be made, but a lot of the times, we transport them and then petition them ourselves to the site unit in Bronson, so.
Thank you.
That's, that's occurring.
Thank you.
Yeah, and there are a number of communities that are exploring a multi, multi-group approach to these behavioral health patients. They might be sending, you know, everybody, every community is doing a little different. You know, the chief described what they're doing now, I think there's other communities looking, okay, they might send a social worker and unarmed law enforcement officer or someone like that, and maybe a paramedic. So there's a lot of different models to look at, because unfortunately, our behavioral health crisis is growing, unfortunately. There's a lot of people who need services. So that would also then free up ambulances and first responders so that they can focus on those true life threatening emergencies while still giving these people the care they need.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Commissioner LaCrosse?
As far as the cost aspect that we were talking about, I know that a lot of hospitals, I'm not, I'm imagining ours does as well, has some type of charity assistance programs. Is there any type of programs like that for the ambulance?
So yes, as a not, not-for-profit, that's a part of our mission, so we have a sizable amount that we write off each year for charity care from people who don't, don't have the ability to pay for services.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Ron, I want to say thank you very much. We're going to have public comments, so there could be some questions from the audience. We're not going to answer them here, but we'll get back to those individuals with any answers.
Good.
At this time, is there any public comment? Yes, Representative Hatzma.
Thank you, Mayor Benke and city commissioners. My name is Jim Hatzma, I live at 249 Snow Avenue, Battle Creek, 49037. I don't support the relaxation of the response time performance variable from eight to 10 minutes. I recognize the argument that this is one of several matrices that ought to be considered. I also recognize the contention that only 2.4%, and I put only in quotation marks, might be significant kinds of occurrences which compel an eight minutes turnaround. But these are cardiac arrest, respiratory arrest kind of medical conditions. And if our loved ones are in that position, and we relax standards on a contracted ambulance service to 10, I think that that bears some responsibility on us for relaxing, relaxing that standard. Finally, I don't support the argument that because some other cities have relaxed the standard, that the same should apply to the city of Battle Creek. I don't believe that when life and death is in play, we should be grading on a curve and comparing ourselves to Kalamazoo. I hope that you're looking at this very carefully, and you're not support this relaxation of the response time performance matrix from eight to 10 minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. Any other public comments at this time? Are there any other public comments? So you none? Are there any further comments from the commission? So you none, we're going to adjourn this work, but thank you very much, everyone.